We're going to call the meeting to order. Salute to the flag. You don't have this one? Okay. Flag's over there. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I know Chris is out. Correspondence, Marcia?
Did we have anything that you know of?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay. And public comment. Is this his favorite part? No? Okay. All right. To the consent agenda, does anybody have any extractions to make from the consent agenda? Do we want to pull out the minutes? Yeah, I had a question. Okay. So we're going to pull out the minutes and then do we just approve everything else and go back?
Yes.
All right. So we'll pull those out. We'll pull out the minutes. Anything else that anybody wants to extract? Okay.
Move. Second.
Okay. Great. All those in favor? Okay. Great. Okay. So did you want to go over, there were two points, right?
Yeah. In minor, under Finance Committee, I wasn't entirely sure where that second sentence came from. It didn't seem to be quite the...
Yeah, I think it was a little stronger comment than, you know, maybe we intended. The committee requested that trustworthy demographic enrollment projections be provided. I think that the conversation was that we've had some projections for the demographics that have not come to fruition, and if we could get some, you know, I don't know how we choose the demographer or if we look at, you know, multiple sets, but...
I think I was appointed demographer.
You were appointed demographer?
Well, actually...
You seem to do a better job.
That's what Dave said. Yeah, that's what he said. Yeah, we can actually get two sources, plus my own interpretation of that projection.
So I think the conversation was just to have, you know, to look into our source of demographic data and...
Or approaching these demographics we do have with the wisdom of experience and budgeting.
Wisdom experiences. Yes. What in essence do you want to change to?
Yeah, let's see.
I think it was really more that, um...
The wisdom of experience.
Yeah, I guess it's really to temper the raw demographic data with, you know, some of our experiences and the information that Dr. Stella gathers from all of other sources. I mean, I talked to the Realtors, we talked to... So really just a combination of the raw data with some of the other information that we get. Most of those were captured.
And I apologize, Lisa, there was another...
The other point was on the discussion of the board goals under Healthy Food.
Okay.
I think what we'd agreed to was evaluate current food offering policy and practice, and just the board policy was missing from quote here.
Okay. And was it on the board...
It is in the goals.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah. So that, yeah, so what we ended up with on the board goals was evaluate current food policies and practices. Is that what we wanted to say?
Okay.
So it just, okay. Yeah. All right. So do we have to approve them with change? Do we have them moving to do that?
Move it. Second.
Any more discussion?
I had a B.C.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. All right. So I think we're through the consent agenda. And if you don't mind, Tim, if we could just let Matt do the building update real quick? You're okay? All right. Great. Matt, did you want to give us an update?
Sure.
Oh, there's something they asked to go before that?
I have to introduce you to this.
Oh, okay.
Get away from the superintendent's seat because we have a video on the coast.
Sure. All right. I screwed it up. I'm sorry. Okay. Tim, would you like to go ahead now?
Absolutely.
After we kept you waiting. Thanks for waiting.
As far as the PTO news goes, we had our first grade level social on Friday the 10th for kindergarten, and it was well-attended. Thirty-five kids and families showed up, had a great time. It was a lot of fun. We have our first grade social this coming Friday night, and then second, third grade take place in November before Thanksgiving. And then fourth, fifth, and sixth, we're going to do bingo night again for that group together in probably February. We haven't scheduled the date yet. Also, a real cool thing that the PTO did was we had $2,100 in Scholastic book money that we earned through our book fairs last year, and it was scheduled to expire in October. And just prior to that, we distributed this money to the classroom teachers. So we asked each teacher to spend $50 on the Scholastic website, and just about everybody did. We were able to spend all that money. And last Tuesday, Marsha Kucic and I distributed $2,100 worth of books to all the classrooms. And everyone was really happy and appreciative. One class wrote us thank you notes.
That's nice.
And we were able to get a lot of good material into the classes that way, which was a nice way to use that money. We just had our Halloween Hoot on Saturday, another great success for the PTO. It was the largest one we've made, or largest money maker we've had so far. We made over $16,000 for the PTO. And, yeah, sixteen-six, something to that effect. It was a great day, very good attendance, and all of that money will go back into the school through special programs and other things. Picture Retake Day is the 27th of October, and that'll close up that fundraiser for us. Our first general PTO meeting will be on Wednesday, the 29th. I believe it's a Wednesday. We're going to hold that at 3:30 in the afternoon and see if we can get some good teacher participation along with parents if you want to come. And then the next thing after that will be our book fair in December. So that's what's happening with the PTO.
All right. Well, congratulations. That was very, very good. All right. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Stella?
Well, let me tie into what was said by the PTO. The PTO is doing a fantastic job. That social night is not only good for the children and the parents who come, it creates a mini-community, all those social nights, and that strengthens the schools, so we're very thankful. This, uh, the Halloween Hoot was one of the best ever, absolutely one of the best. I know the kind of work that went into it, so we have to thank our co-chairs, Carrie Matthews and Penny Zampoff, and all the volunteers, distilling workers, and so on. A lot of effort, but there were hundreds and hundreds of people, intergenerational, lots of fun. They put me working in the kitchen. I don't know if that was a message about anything, but I was watching the cafeteria practices there as we went along. So we were very, very pleased. As far as the building upgrade, I can't think of a better way of starting than with a report on the upgrade by showing two educational videos that were made by one of our teaching assistants. She asked for permission, and she did work throughout the summer and put it together into two short videos. And we'll have some other videos, too, that we plan to use for educational purposes in helping the children to understand what the upgrade was about, so. You didn't know there was that much stuff above the ceiling? Now, after the children see this, I'm afraid they're going to walk through the hallways But this can lead to a lot of good discussion, as far as educational discussion about the upgrade. And the other was called, Vicki called it "The Day the Crane Came." So as you can see, Vicki, in her artistic way, has created some of the potential for some powerful lessons. And I'd like to introduce Matt Ward, project manager, who's been working so hard to make all of this happen.
Does it work? Yes, no?
No.
Yeah. Does it?
Turn it on. It's probably in the front. No. Those are all the turn things on. Thank you.
Anytime.
Those videos are great, and Vicki was great throughout the process, coming out and taking pictures. I wasn't really sure what it was going to culminate to, but obviously, it really shows you what we did this summer, you know, coming back, you know. No one's going to notice new ceiling, you know, new ceiling tiles. And the lights mostly are retrofits. You will notice some new lights in the gymnasiums down the pool area, even on the exterior, there's some LEDs that we've put in. But it was a lot of work, and the energy savings you guys will be getting from those lights are going to be very impactful. I've actually gotten a lot of positive feedback about the lights in the gymnasiums. They really like those a lot, the motion sensor ones, so the kids get to, like, run in and run around to get them all to come on. And then 20 minutes later, after they all go off, they just want to run back in and have them all go on again. We also did the upgrade for the water, which was putting new toilets in and some aerators and stuff like that. And I don't expect to get compliments on toilets, but not getting negative feedback is the positive feedback when we talk about bathrooms. We've been doing a lot of work on the roof, actually during this school year. You saw that steel we put up there. It was pretty pivotal for us to get that membrane underneath before we put that steel up, because replacing that roof after we did that work would be very difficult. The steel obviously had to go up because that's where the new chiller's going to rest, along with the microturbine. So that was a very big deal to us, and getting that installed. We've actually been able to do a lot more of the roof than we anticipated, which is a very good thing for everybody. Dr. Stella's worked pretty seamlessly with us to help us schedule, and all the teachers, faculty, and staff have really helped any possible way they could to allow us to do the work that we need to do. And we're trying our best to, you know, be those guys that come in the night, the elves, as Dr. Stella likes to say. We saw the elves here a little bit earlier, you know, flipping some breakers to get some lights changed out. We are pretty close to finishing up most of the upgrades we had planned for this year. You've seen the new window walls, all those are installed. All the new unit vents and the A&amp;C wing are installed as well, along with the case work cabinetry, stuff like that. Right now, we're just kind of in that process of buttoning a lot of that stuff up. There's some transition pieces and some small pieces that, you know, will really finalize that. And as we finish that up, we really are starting to look to the future for the rest of this fall. The big key pieces are going to be getting that chiller installed, along with the microturbine. Those are the two big units that are going up on the roof. There's also two energy recovery units that will go down this S-wing area and tie into this fan coil unit that are already installed. So we do have some work ahead of us, but once we get that big work out of the way, there'll be some minor work that we'll be doing for the rest of the year, and then it's all about planning for next summer. So when the school is emptied of all the children and faculty, that, you know, we get all of our work done to obviously get it all done, you know, before the teachers and the kids come back for next year. So everything's been working really well. Are there any questions or concerns? Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. I'm going to turn this off now.
Just a few pieces of news. Well, first of all, we extend a special salute to Amity High School on being named the number-one high school in Connecticut by Newsweek magazine. That's a source of celebration for Amity High School and all the feeder districts at the same time. And on being awarded the Blue Ribbon status for 2014, while congratulating Amity High School, we thank our taxpayers for supporting education from preschool right up to 12th grade. Some good news, the Woodbridge School District received the highest number of communication awards from the Connecticut Association of School Boards. We received a total of six awards, and a representative from Cape will be coming to a future meeting to share that with us. Also, I'll mention as part of the district's comprehensive communication plan, an e-blast system has been established for communications from the superintendent and the school principal will be sending out regular e-blasts, so we have achieved that. Next point is, one of our goals is creating a generation of good local, national, and global citizens. And we know that as a learning organization, Beecher Road School has more than four walls. We seek to have our children reach outside, and our staff outside the walls, and bring the world right into us. One of our staff members has helped us to do that. The school district partnered with UNH in supporting participation of a representative from our school in a Fulbright Summer Study Institute in Morocco. And we believe that her participation in the institute will help to raise awareness of other cultures, non-Western as well as Western. And Kathy Sidrowski is with us, and we'd like to share a few words and maybe a few pictures about what the trip meant and maybe some of the implications for Beecher Road School.
First, I'd like to say thank you very much and for welcoming me and the opportunity to show you a very quick view of my four weeks in Morocco. Okay, first, I had the opportunity, Dr. Stella sent out an email saying that there's an opportunity to apply for Fulbright, and with the support of Dr. Stella, I applied, went through the rigorous forms to fill out, letters of recommendation, interviews, and I was selected as one of the 12 participants' educators to go on the Fulbright. This is hoping to build our connection with UNH and continue the bridge with UNH. So it was very important. This is when we first landed in Morocco. We landed in Casablanca, and we stayed at the University of Alloquin. And actually, it's in Efrain, so it's up north. And I'm just going to go up real quick and won't take a long time. This is the university. It's wonderful there. We actually stayed during Ramadan, so it was a little challenging as far as meals, but we survived. This is the group that went. It was 12 of us and two educators from UNH. Arabic was a challenge. It was an intense program, three hours a day of Arabic instruction. This was Ali. He was wonderful. He was one of our instructors. This is a gathering with great people, and of course, you can see one of the differences in the culture is sometimes when you travel, the men are separated from the women, so we were actually, a group of us were together at someone's house. This is on our way to Chef Chong, which is up north, and just on the other side. Very warm, I will say, over 100 degrees. And as we were saying earlier...
It's the souk.
They're beautiful, yeah. The colors, it's called the blue city.
You must have bought a rug.
Yes, I bought several.
If you can, let's skip it.
I thought for sure they would stop me at the airport. This is in Fez, where what they call is evening, just before Ramadan ends, I handed out glow sticks to all the children, and they were very excited about that. Again, more of the souks. And this is how they go around town, sort of letting everyone know that Ramadan has ended. They play music. And again, some of the crafts. Everything's very geometric, the art. The food, what can I say? It was wonderful. I wish I could bring some of it back. And they do have McDonald's there. That's up in Sedition, Ushla Genna, more. The children of Morocco, you can see on their feet how they have the henna, or celebrate. Again, we visited schools. One school was, this one was more impoverished area, and another one was for international students, part of the university. And again, they like having their picture taken, or taking your picture there. Again, more of the art. And I bring up the art because one of the connections that we have, not strictly to me, this is the ruins in Moopolis. Very warm there, trying to stay cool. Yeah, some of the friends that I've made in Morocco. So the connection that we want to go forward, follow-up to this wonderful trip, is art. Someone like Ali's have asked how we can sort of incorporate this into the curriculum, and Mrs. Atchison from the art department is hoping to gather some students, classes, and do some connection with the artwork, with the geometric and the math, in relation to that. I've also had colleagues from other grade levels. I teach fifth and sixth grade, where they want to possibly Skype with students from Morocco, from different schools. We are going to do it with fifth graders this year, two classes in fifth grade, and those are with students and parents that volunteered over the summer to do Skyping, but unfortunately, I could not get the internet there and the time to coordinate, so we hope to do that soon. That was a quick, very quick overview. I could have you here till 12.
Well, Kathy is going to, as part of the team, will be presenting at the Woodbridge Public Library. We'll come up with a date sometime in November, so it'll be a community presentation. And again, we'll try to bring awareness to our children and our staff through different types of Skype conferences, awful different ways, as Kathy mentioned, of tying it into the curriculum, whether it's art or social studies, particularly on the sixth grade, where they study world cultures. And we'll look for any kind of connection that we can make. Steve, you had a question?
I just, I missed maybe, and I'm sure we talked about it earlier, what was the point of it? What was...
The point of going on...
Yeah, no, I mean, what was the educational component? Was it art? Was it art, was it just...
It was the education, culture and the education diversity in global classrooms there and here. It was a connection. And actually, I will be part of the team, Fulbright team, that's going to present at the National Council of Social Studies in Boston next month as well. So it'll definitely be awesome.
So thank you very much. We're very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
You know, speaking of world cultures and languages, we had a meeting this past week. We invited the middle school principal came over, and the wonderful language instructors representing the staff, and the Maureen McPadden, who is the director of curriculum from Amity, as well as the principal from Bethany Elementary School, and our own world language teachers and our principal. And we just had a, we had a meeting together to see how we could align and enhance what we're doing together. And Richard Dillinger, who speaks Spanish himself, he worked in, his wife is a native speaker, and he worked in an international school in Venezuela. His wife is a teacher of Spanish in one of the elementary schools in a high-performing district. And it's a nice compliment. He said that this is one of the most intensive world language programs on the elementary level that he's seen. But again, that's not good enough, because we're talking about how do we raise the bar and at the same time bring our assisted district with us. And so we're arranging for, you know, we presented what program we had here, there was discussion, we got feedback from the middle school as far as what they're seeing, as far as what our children bring there, areas we could work on and improve on. And Bethany, my understanding is they're trying, looking for ways to enhance the time that they spend on world languages. So you'll be hearing more about world languages as we move ahead. Passy, I don't know if you're pronouncing it right, Schalberg, who's at Harvard now, he's an educator from Finland, and he's written several books on education in Finland. He said that one of the most important things that you would do, if someone asked if you were superintendent in a district in Connecticut, what would you do? He says, "Well, I could speak five languages, and most people in Finland can. I would push for language development, because through language development, the mind does all kinds of things." So that's one of the areas, and I know the board is keenly interested in that. You'll be hearing more reports as we go along. That brings us to the area of mathematics. We're very, very proud of the student achievement in mathematics in past years, but again, we're always looking for constant improvement, continuous improvement with our children. And we're trying to raise the bar in a way that will help our children to have the resilience and the tenacity to work in the proper educational environment to stretch their minds and then just achieve along their own pathways. And by the way, the educator from Finland was pointing out the importance, how they stress individual instruction and differentiation, and that's the direction we're going in also. We've done a lot of work with staff on language arts over the past several years, and so mathematics will be a major focus this year. And some of the ways that we're supporting this initiative is that we have, we have two full-time math specialists and two outstanding educators who are with us tonight, Jim O'Lo and Maureen Crowick. And we have a lead administrator, Nancy White, who will be working as part of the team, giving oversight to it. We'll have support from the outside. Emily Freo from ACES, who's a math specialist, will come in and work directly with teachers and help us to differentiate more and look at the pathways of children more. There was comprehensive summer curriculum work this past summer. They were close to, I think they were close to, if I'm not mistaken, 15, 16 teachers working on developing a Beecher Road School/Woodbridge curriculum. You know, I promised the parents we would take standards, we would make the curriculum ourselves. Our teachers would develop the curriculum, and that's exactly what's happened during this past summer. They just enhanced it. With the school board support, we purchased, and the teachers have been involved with this here, supplementary math materials on all different... And by the way, the educator from Finland was pointing out the importance that, how they stress individual instruction and differentiation, and that's the direction we're going in also. We've done a lot of work with staff on language arts over the past several years, and so mathematics will be a major focus this year. Some of the ways that we're supporting this initiative is that we have, we have two full-time math specialists, and two outstanding educators who are with us tonight, Jim O'Lo and Maureen Crowe. And we have a lead administrator, Nancy White, who will be working as part of the team, giving oversight to it. We'll have support from the outside, Emily Freo from ACES, who's a math specialist, will come in and work directly with teachers and help us to differentiate more and look at the pathways of children more. There was comprehensive summer curriculum work this past summer, they were close to, I think they were close to, if I'm not mistaken, 15, 16 teachers, working on developing a Beecher Road School Woodbridge curriculum. You know, I promised the parents we would take standards, we would make the curriculum ourselves, our teachers would develop the curriculum, and that's exactly what's happened during this past summer, they just enhanced it. We've, with the school board support, we purchased, and the teachers have been involved with this here, supplementary math materials on all different levels to support it, including investigations, which is, this is online, anchor set, and it's hard copies also. We've joined a statewide mathematics consortium, which is a powerful professional learning community, where representatives from our school go to this consortium, and they meet with teachers throughout the state to talk about mathematical practices. And what we're looking at is a, as a year of self-study of our current mathematics program, where we are and where we want to go. And perhaps after this year of study, we'll look forward to creating a powerful two-year plan that will take us there, two or three-year plan. We've enlisted the support of the Tri-State Consortium. And what is the Tri-State Consortium? It's a dynamic learning organization of high performing districts in the metropolitan area, including Connecticut, New York, and New Jersey, people who are interested in going far beyond any standardized kind of testing, constantly studying how to help children improve the quality of education, using quantitative and qualitative data to enhance student performance. So they, so we'll have a team of about 10 to 15 educators from other districts come in May, and they'll sit with our educators here for three full days, interact, there'll be interaction with parents as well, administrators with children too, and they'll serve as critical thought partners to, and we're not looking for a report card, getting an A plus for doing a good job, what we're looking for are, yes, some commendations, what do they see as outside, as pairs of outside people looking at our system that we're doing right, and what are areas, recommendations as far as moving forward that we can do and work with. So we're looking forward to that. And we have our two math consultants, Jean and Maureen, that will talk about the committee that we form, because we want to do this from the bottom up too, with our teachers, and, and the process that we're gonna use. And then we'll have time for any kind of questions that you may have.
Is there gonna be stuff on the screen here?
There will be, but you have it on your.
No, I'm just like, should I?
Yeah, they're right. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. So Jean and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the process and how we started. So a representative committee was formed at the beginning of September, all the faculty members were invited to join the committee. We have about 20 members, including classroom teachers, specialists, and administrators, but we meet regularly. Our first session was a great brainstorming opportunity, we talked about concepts we wanted to consider as we formulated our essential questions. Teachers came up with dozens of words and phrases associated with mathematics. Some examples include flexible thinking, perseverance, personalized learning, and differentiation. Subsequently, we categorized these ideas into subgroups, perseverance, differentiation, problem solving, and fluency. We then talked some more, and then began the process of writing our essential questions.
So essential questions are a key component of the Tri-State process. So what are they? They're designed to focus the district in its preparation and to guide the visiting team in its thinking process. The questions are meant to help the team offer us their best advice, which is really what we want, at the end of their three days with us. The Tri-State committee members worked on several drafts of our essential questions. Now, the essential questions are, incorporate the standards for mathematical practice, which are from the Common Core, so it's important to understand what these are. The, the Common Core standards for mathematics have two separate sets of standards, content standards and standards for mathematical practice. The content standards are the set of math skills and concepts for each grade. So for example, a grade, one of the grade two standards says that students should be able to read and write numbers to 1,000 using base 10 numerals and number names and expanded forms. That's a grade two standard. There's a grade five standard that says students should be able to read, write, and compare decimals to thousands. So those are the content standards. But the essential questions incorporate the standards for mathematical practice, which Maureen will discuss.
The standards for mathematical practice describe the various proficiencies that math educators at all levels should seek to develop in their students. The content standards are specific to each grade level, the standards for mathematical practices are consistent from kindergarten through grade 12. These standards include processes of problem solving, reasoning and proof, and communication. They also address mathematical proficiency and reasoning, conceptual understanding, procedural fluency, and the habits of mind. The habits of mind include the sense that mathematics is sensible, useful, and worthwhile. Diligence and a belief in one's own abilities are also habits of mind. Now we're gonna show you the two essential questions that our committee developed. The first one is, to what extent do students' mathematical experiences incorporate the standards for mathematical practice with meaningful and creative application to their lives within and outside of school?
And the second essential question is, to what extent do we recognize, nurture, and meet the diverse mathematical needs of all learners?
And underneath you find all the Common Core standards for mathematics, there's eight standards for mathematical practices that will be looked at, that that's what essential question, the first one, is referring to.
And just to emphasize again, the standards for mathematical practice are the same K through 12. And then after we wrote the essential questions as a committee, we turned our attention to the Tri-State indicators.
So the Tri, under Tri-State, there are three categories of systemic performance that form the framework of the Tri-State assessment model. The categories are student performance, internal support, and external support. And you'll notice those up on the screen or in your packet. And they form the triangle. And they, there are eight performance indicators altogether. These indicators each have a set of questions that are the basis for our self-study and preparing for our visit.
And your, your packet has a list of all the indicators and the questions, which is what that is up there.
There's indicator one for example.
So each indicator, there are eight indicators, and each indicator has a set, a set of questions for study and reflection.
So we're looking forward to the rest of the year and working with our committee and looking at those indicators and reflecting on those questions in the process that then the Tri-State visiting team will come to look at in May.
Just while I'm, I'm thinking process, so we come up with the questions that we want them to, so if, for example, if we're looking at, I don't know, what are two questions? So what if they, they come in, they're only looking at that, and we only self-reflect on those things, or they look at the whole math program?
Well, we, we decide as a committee what we want them to look at, what lens we want them to look at. So they look at everything but through that lens. So they look, we wanted them to specifically look at the standards for mathematical practices and how we're, how we see that in school and outside of school. And then to what extent, we wanted to look specifically at the diverse needs of all learners and how we were doing with that. So we kind of focused on differentiation, and then the standards for mathematical practice.
And then the performance-based assessment, this thing, is this something that Tri-State gives you as like the backbone or something?
Yeah, it's made up of, that's from Tri-State, they, they have eight indicators that are in those three categories. So there are, in the triangle, there's student performance, there's three indicators under student performance, and there's four indicators under internal support, and one indicator under external support. So they look at the whole picture. Each one of those indicators has questions under it that, then you look at performance data, and then you'll, the team, each, the committee has subgroups under it, and those people will then look at those questions, and we reflect on those.
So what's the, so, so this sounds like you're doing all of this work. So is this really just a, so where does Tri-State fall in, and how do they independently observe?
Well, it's a self-study. So they come in and then they look at the evidence and the data, like what we've collected for each one of them.
So they read your report?
It's not a report as much as data, we're in evidence.
An evidence that we've collected.
Teachers are going to be collecting over this entire year, evidence of what we do in our, in our, our.
Yeah, if I may add, the strength of this here is that the, our learning organization, our school, we are the ones that engage in the self-study. And Tri-State has a template to guide us with that. And they guide us to say, okay, if you say something, show us with some kind of proof that that's happening. And then they come in as thought partners with us, this is like the culmination, to analyze, you know, what we've done, and then based on the whole process to make recommendations to us as we move forward, you know.
Those recommendations arise by virtue of their perspective of best practices as they understand them, or as they look at us through that much more narrow focus?
It's a pretty broad, broad focus, because those are umbrella goals, and the indicators each allow us like a tree with so many branches going out. So yes, it's best practices, but they're looking at where we are now, so they're saying, okay, you're on your journey, here are the commendations we can give, here's where we see weak areas that you could improve upon.
And I think people are focusing a little bit, although we're asking them to look at specific areas, they don't just look at the evidence you collect, they're in the classroom, they're talking to the teachers. So if you're trying, you know, like if there was information that wasn't in the data you collected, they would still see evidence of that in the classroom. So say we claim that, you know, we are, you know, meeting the needs of all different kinds of learners, and this is the evidence to support that, if they're looking in the classroom and saying, you know, we can see that there's a group, you know, that is not being served by a particular lesson.
There's an area you have to work on.
Right. So is that, that what, maybe I missed your point completely, or was that what you were?
Yeah, they're coming with a frame of reference that represents their very best understanding of best practice.
Right, and also even though there's only two essential questions, and so maybe they seem narrow, the standards for mathematical practice are really everything that we want to be doing in math. You know, it's problem solving, reasoning, attending to precision, you know, all of the things that we want students to do all the time in math. So if we're doing all of this, then we're, you know, that's what, that is what we want. It's actually incredibly broad in scope, and, and that's why we chose to write one of our essential questions around these standards for mathematical practice, because they're so, so important.
I think we still have.
I'm sorry, give us a sec.
Actually, I have a question, I was just going to confirm. They give us commendations and recommendations on each of those eight, right? It's not simply on the two.
Using a rubric.
Yes.
By the way, they, we had a study in 2010 in language arts, which we presented to the board, and it was a pretty comprehensive report that they gave us. And that was language arts, it's math this time, every three years, Tri-State districts, each district picks an area that they, they want to focus on. The board may suggest the next time around it could be social studies, it could be medical commission, it could be 21st century skills.
You had some more questions.
So you're kind of opening up my next question, which is, you know, so we had a 2010 language arts. Do we see an update at some point on where the commendations were, and where the recommendations were, and what we've done to do, you know what I mean, like? I feel like we get a commend, we get the report, and then we don't really hear about it afterwards.
We've done, we've actually done that, we're comprehensive reports to the board on it.
Well, when they first do it. But I'm saying like on an ongoing basis, like where we are with those reports, so.
Yeah, we won't forget about language arts, we'll give you an update, ongoing reports on this as we go along, absolutely.
Do they come back for the follow-up on language arts?
Yeah, and we gave a report to you at that time. Yeah, what'll happen is they'll, they'll give a report, and then they'll come back, was it two years later, to give, for consultancy day. By the way, we, we, a number of our own staff members, including myself, other people will go around to other districts too and do the same thing. So it's, it's, it's a learning community, that's, and that goes across the three, the three states. It challenges our thinking, I'm very proud of the fact, but just think of this, we're a small, relatively small district, we have 20 teachers that step forward for a committee, and we're involving, and there's, there are several other committees, so, so a number of these teachers are working on three or four different committees, so teachers are giving very generously of their time, and they're interested in this here. And what I like is, it's a bottom-up kind of thing, too. And if you look at our committee, it's very representative of the different grade levels, primary, the upper grades, multi-age, specialist. And again, it's a teacher-driven kind of thing, which I like, with administrators very heavily involved right alongside.
Sure. I've been involved in this process a couple of times from the start, and it's a very reflective process. So in looking at all of these indicators, as you go through the process, you realize are you, what you are doing and what you need, what we need to work on. So in the district, it becomes a very reflective self, it's a self-study.
Absolutely. But we're interested in mastery of learning, so we'll get the report, I'm not so much interested in saying, you know, we scored at the, at the top of the metropolitan area in this here. We really want to grow, so we wanted them to dig deep as far as critical partners with us and say, okay, you did well here, but there's, there, we see gaps here. You know, we're not gonna be shocked if we see gaps, we're gonna say, okay, that's what we have to work on, always building on what we have. And, and we know, and we know, we know that the quality of education and the standards of education are really going up. What we like to take pride in is that we try very hard to fashion through our teachers the environment that allows children to go higher in their achievement, in a developmental way as appropriate for them. So I want to thank you very much. Any other questions?
So when you're doing like the evidence gathering, is that what is called evidence gathering? So does every teacher, like everybody does a component of that, or it's, so?
Teachers are involved at some place along the process. When we have, we collect the evidence for each indicator, so we'll be putting boxes together with all the indicators and then per grade level, and then the teachers become more involved as we, as we step into that. We're, our next step is to form subgroups under our committee that will be in charge of each indicator, so that's actually our next step in doing that.
And when you're looking at this, oh, I'm sorry.
I just followed, so if you, so every class, so for example, if you have four classes in a grade, and three teachers are like doing amazing stuff with differentiation, when the portfolio goes in, will it come back and say, look, three of your four teachers are doing what needs to be done, but the fourth is not, or, like, do you know what I mean, like, so if we're looking at differentiation, is it looking at across the school, you've got systems in place to do it, versus you're actually implementing it in all the classrooms? Is that?
Or is it more that they might say, your fourth grade group does a great job of differentiation, here's the components that we see as amazing, and then if we know that we're only doing that in three or five classrooms, we can say, okay, they identified this particular thing as really a good thing, and we want to now make sure that it, it goes not just in, you know.
They did that with the language arts for instance.
Right, I remember.
They said the workshop model is, you have it in so many classes throughout the school, but not all, not all the teachers are engaged in it. So their suggestion was to come up with systematic, comprehensive, and differentiated kind of learning experiences that will allow all teachers to learn and implement. And that we worked on, and we did, and we've seen definite progress with that. So they'll, they'll do the same thing. They won't identify a teacher and say, this class is not happening.
I don't mean that, but I'm saying.
The process.
So if you, I'm just saying, you get a report back that says you're doing differentiation, but if every teacher, I'm just trying to understand, I don't, I'm trying to understand how you.
They give you a ranking too, that, you know, you're doing this in many classrooms, you're doing this in most classrooms, you're doing this, you know, some people are doing this, or ideally.
Yeah, that's what the rubric, the rubric will show you that.
The rubric includes that differentiation.
To get to the highest category of the rubric, you have to show everyone is doing this here. If not, you could say developing, you know, that you're moving teachers along that line, but not everyone is involved with it.
And do you make predictions already on what you think they're gonna say, these are great things you're doing, and these are things you need work on throughout the year? By the time they tell you this, you already know what they're gonna say? I mean, how does this?
I think we'll have a pretty good idea. But we, this is very ambitious, what we've, what we've written, our essential questions, because of the standards for mathematical practice. These are the gold standards of mathematical education, teaching and learning, they really, really are. So we're, we're putting ourselves, you know, really under a microscope, this is what we want to be doing. This is what we want to be doing, and, and that's why we did it.
I'm very proud of it, Jean. Absolutely. They really raised the bar. What I like about this here, as a school district, we're not just compliance-driven with all changes from the outside, or you have to do this or that. We want to keep our integrity as a learning organization that constantly focuses on children and how we could do a better job as teachers in working with that. And knowing that we can always grow.
And I think it's hard to understand, because I remember, and I can't remember what the presentation was about. You talked a lot, Jean, about, you know, the essential question. And it's hard when you see the finished project to understand, or the finished statement, to understand how much discussion and how much, you know, work and, you know, all kinds of, of, you know, things went into developing that. It's hard for us to see that because they come to us with a finished, you know, statement, and we don't see all, all of the work. But I remember you talking about, you know, the number of, the amount of time and how passionate people were about the essential question. Okay.
It's a passionate people.
So, yeah, which is great.
So there'll be more ongoing recourse to the board.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this? The only thing as a follow-up from you that might be helpful is just like, just a little bit of a, of a timeline. Like, you know, this is, you know, you're gathering information from here to here. This is when, you know, you're, you know, like just, just a kind of a real broad timeline about how this happens. And then when you get the results and you're developing a plan, you know, what's kind of the timeline for the development of the plan, you know, bringing it back to us, which I realize is not, you know, the first thing you worry about. But, you know, at what point we see, see the plan and, you know, where do we go from there? So that would be, you know, not tonight.
It's not tonight.
No, 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 we're here tonight. But, you know, like at some points during the year.
Absolutely.
We're getting updates. This is, math is, you know, the big thing this year. So we've got multiple, you know, meetings to talk about math, so.
We'll be back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Dr. Stella, are you on?
Yep.
Okay. Facilities.
We met on October 2nd, and we actually met in the north office, and we had a very nice tour of the work that's been done. We had a tour of the A wing and the window walls. We actually saw in the evening a window wall in the midst of getting recruited. And I was impressed with all the work. It's obvious that it's been coordinated very efficiently and effectively, and that there's minimal disruption to the ongoing learning in the school. And the end result was great.
Thank you. Steve. Yep.
So everyone, I already approved the previous general monthly reports. The two items that we discussed were, the first one is the capital budget. Do you want me to go through it, Dr. Stella?
Yeah, yeah, one, two, both, okay.
So for the first time in I don't know how long we haven't.
Move, we approve the 2015-2016 capital budget this week.
Thanks. All right.
Okay.
Now I can discuss.
Now.
So for the first time in a very long time, I'm happy that it doesn't have like a $15 million number on it. That is a big plus. You know, essentially, the main item, the main two items, one is the asphalt and concrete replacement, which is actually part of a STEEP grant. So that is sort of dependent upon the STEEP grant funding. The main item for this year is the technology budget. And as you recall, we always, over the years, have had a technology budget that continues to replace, upgrade as our technology sort of wears out. We upgrade new. And so the bulk of this year's request is essentially the technology budget, which is on page six, is the actual breakdown of what's in there. It's a combination of student computing, desktop, mobile items, faculty mobile computing upgrades for those computers that are sort of reached their life expectancy, routine replacement of office computers, some classroom projector replacements, some document cameras from the kindergarten classrooms. And again, some network infrastructure upgrade. We actually, I learned that we're going to, what's the, the new cabling that we're getting put in? How many? We're getting a new sort of, what was the number?
The speed.
Was it 40 gig? Right, it was some.
That was a lot.
There's a much faster line coming.
Yeah, it was fast.
It says 40 gig.
Is that what it says? It says 40 gig. So there's a new line coming in, and so the infrastructure to enable us to utilize the extra bandwidth coming into the school is part of this budget. So that's the bulk of it. So the other stuff, cafeteria equipment, grounds and landscaping, we just put those in there so the town has a sense of what we're going to need to replace in terms of cafeteria over the next five years, six years, and the same thing with grounds and landscaping. Anything you want to add to that?
Thank you, Steve. I think you covered it all.
All right. Any questions?
Okay, all those in favor?
And then the only other thing that we put in there for review that we did discuss was, as you know, over the years, we've been doing a sort of planned, we offer early retirement incentives. So we just put this graph just to show people in 2002, 2007 to 2008, what our staffing grid looked like in terms of percentage of our faculty at different ages, different points in their step, and then what it looks like today. And I'm thrilled that we've managed to maintain sort of a equal distribution among early teachers and later teachers. Because if we hadn't been doing these early retirement things, we'd probably somewhere in the 70% of our teachers would be kind of 15-plus staff. And the concern over time is one, both the financial impact of that as well as the leaving of many teachers at once and leaving us with a very under-experienced staff. So I think that this looks great and is a testament to the, you know, program that we've done over the last few years.
I would characterize that observation quite uncharacteristically. For Steve, it's a masterpiece of understatement.
I hope somebody wrote that down.
I come from a, as everybody knows, a business perspective, and I've claimed over the years that this board is in the business of educating children. Shortly after Marjorie Acton came on board, she passed out a, an article from one of the recognized associations indicating that business principles and business practices had no place in education. And I'm sure Guy will understand this. My view is that nobody in her position of authority sends out an article unless she fully believes that it's absolutely true. I didn't believe that it was true and wrote a response to it which failed to get published. And in that response, I indicated my feelings that education is indeed a place where there's perfect soil for the planting of sound business practices. Happily for us, Guy had not read the article that Marjorie had sent out. And one of the things that he did along with Chuck, I mentioned a few names, I may miss a few, but it's always dangerous to present accolades. But Chuck DeZettergen was interested, coming from a business background, in how our costs were behaving. And he, and Guy took the great horror of the then finance committee produced the analysis that in very short order, we would be confronting a huge problem in managing. In fact, one of the very sound business practices which came into play was that we had an obligation and we had the knowledge and skills to produce proactive intervention in managing of the staff and faculty. When I first saw these numbers today, I had an instant bout of cardiac arrest and got in touch with Guy and said, the numbers don't prove what I thought we were going to prove. And the missing piece, as Steve had said, is that had we done nothing, that if we looked at the faculty profile today, 70% would be in the top grade, the top end of it, whereas we're now just below 50%. And I would characterize that as a tremendous accomplishment and would be bold enough to suggest that it will be considered one of the landmark accomplishments of Guy Stella's administration in this district.
I'd like to give some credit to the finance committees that have been working with us over the years and to Al Pullo, who's been my right-hand man, especially the past few years in training the grid and also your retirement. But the board has given good support for this. I think it has acknowledged our teachers too for their long service. I think that has gone a long way, and it saved our taxpayers money. And it's given us a chance to have a good grid as far as experience-wise.
Okay. Anything else, Steve? You've got nothing? Okay. All right. Okay, so the next item is the revised board of it goals. It's not really a revision. There was, after we went through the goals at the last meeting and you have it in your packet, it's just the, the goal setting for 2014-15. We had set the goals, and that's what's under the goal statement, is really what we had already approved as a board. There was some discussion about, it didn't really bring us to like a cohesive statement about what we really, what is our goal, or what do we want from each of these things? And what is our expectation from each of these things? So at the end of the year, we can say, you know, this is what we expected under each of these. So this is just a draft of not the goal statement, because that's already approved, but kind of a general intention or philosophy or whatever wording we want to use. And then what do we expect as outcomes here? So we can go through these individually, or we can just go through any that people had discussion on. Really, this is to make sure that everybody understands what our expectation is when we're done this year. So did anybody have anything on any of these? Everybody's, you know, there's kind of a, you know, an initial draft.
That's what happens when we put air conditioning in.
Isn't that, yeah. We just have the steel for the, to learn.
Well, to discuss it, I'll say move that we adopt the 2014-15 revised goals as presented.
A second.
Okay. All right.
That was me, a second. I was shivering one now.
So did anybody have, we'll just go through them real quickly. Was there any discussion on differentiation? Okay. World language. Math, and this one, the, the general intention here, you know, in reading and writing, we say we want to, you know, we want to have readers and writers. We don't say we want to teach kids to read and write. We want to have, you know, readers and writers. So math is a little, I don't know if it's trickier or what we want to say for.
Problem solve.
Yeah, mathematical practices, I know.
Practices.
Yeah, I don't know how to encompass what our intention is in math. I mean, obviously what, you know, Jean and Ben, you know, Ms. Crowick, Maureen, said earlier, I'm not sure how to encompass that in a single statement, or, and maybe somebody has an idea.
Because my idea would just be to maximize our performance in the standards of mathematical practice that they listed. You know, we got problem solving, we only got one of the five.
That's correct.
We didn't do very good.
The mathematical practice.
Say that again. Just say that one more time.
Of course.
Maximize our performance, I think teacher and student performance.
We want to put those words in or just performance? What, what next?
In the standard of mathematical practice.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussion on that? It's, it's tough to, it's tough, you know, to talk about it at a high level, but I think if we look at those standards, that is, that's a good summary.
Implementation of the mathematical practices, the mathematical practices.
Okay, so rather than performance, maximize performance in the standards of mathematical practices?
Sure.
Read it again, Christopher.
We want to maximize our performance in the standard of mathematical practices. So those eight standards that were listed in.
I don't think it's the stack. It's the eight mathematical practices as a template for.
Maximize performance of the eight.
Maximize implementation.
I'm taking my cue from Marsha. She's looking at us like we're will you.
Yeah, I'm trying to follow what's being said, and I'm lost as to what's being said, so.
What we're trying to say is the eighth, the eight mathematical practices that are listed in the packets and that we're kind of discussing tonight, that those are the things that we want our students to be able to do, and we want them to be able to do them very well.
Yeah.
What was it? Maximize fluency in the standard of mathematical practice?
I wish I had a hand, let's see. Makes sense of calibrums, reason abstractly and quantitatively, construct viable arguments, models, use appropriate tools, attend to precision, look for and make use of structure, look for and express regularity in repeated reasoning.
Just leave it as maximize performance in the standards for mathematical practices.
Okay, all right.
These are, we don't have to say they're eight. It's the conference data, so just say.
So everybody's, okay, we really, we're, our intention is, these are the eight standards we're talking about. We want to maximize our students' performance. Okay, all right. Then, did anybody have anything else in math? Okay, social, emotional. And then healthy food, this, this is the correct statement, evaluate current food policies and practices? Okay.
And that's what you unwrote, yes?
Right, that, it was, I think policy.
I was trying to change it. I just.
No, 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 making sure you got it right.
What we had talked about and had, allowing to be agreed to. I think what we had said was evaluate current food offering.
Okay. Okay. So the intention and outcomes, everybody's, okay? Nothing else? All right, then we just need to vote if there's no more discussion. All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, so. Kate Lee's on report. Lisa.
The conference is coming up, Dave. I'm encouraging districts to send a delegate to the delegate assembly to have a voice in setting the agenda or policies for CAPE going forward. I don't know, is anybody here registered at this point to go to the conference?
I am, just, just for Friday, though. I can only go Friday.
Yeah, I encourage board members to attend it, so it's a good selection. In fact, that's.
It's Julie's bat mitzvah on Saturday. Bat mitzvah.
Oh, no, no, no. We understand. Vasi Shelver, educated from Finland, is going to be one of the keynote speakers. Very, very interesting man. Very excellent presentation.
One of the things the CAPE conference does is make you appreciate the kinds of problems we have here versus the kinds of problems that other people are dealing with. So if nothing else, it gives you that perspective. Okay, so everybody should have already gotten to Marsha about if they're intending or not. So if you haven't done that, the end date is Friday, so we have to have it done before Friday. Okay. All right, so upcoming meeting presentations, we have social, emotional health development next month and the summer programs update. So did anybody have anything on social, emotional? All I had, oh, I'm sorry. Lisa.
Good. Can we hear a little bit more about what we're going to be hearing next week? Like which aspect of social and emotional health and development will we be getting more on last year's survey? Or do we know yet what's on the agenda?
We haven't shaped it completely yet, but Cheryl, do you want to give some?
And some of today's discussion right now is to shape it.
Yeah.
That, that was my expectation, that tonight I would hear what you're most interested in so that we shape our presentation.
Right.
To answer any thoughts or questions that you might have.
Well, I think what's articulated in the goals is, you know, I think what we said we're very interested in.
And of those, like one of the things I was looking for is not just a list, but a little description of all of our current programs. There's programs that people, if their children have been involved, have heard of, like child-led play maybe and lunch group. But if you haven't had a child involved in those, you may or may not be aware because they're not, you know, kind of the state mandated, you know, programs that, that we get reporting on. So all of the programs that exist, if we could get a little, you know, description of those things and a little bit about, you know, how, how kids are, you know, that we, what we look for in moving those kids into those programs or, you know, you know, how, how we use those programs a little bit. The other thing I was looking for was the, a little preliminary budget. What do we think? Do we have adequate staff? Do we have, you know, for evaluation? Do we have, you know, for evaluation, for maintenance of the programs, for dealing with all of the things that are coming up now? And then, the other one was just on responsive classroom. Although we have training across the board, the teachers use it in many ways, you know, as they, you know, teach in many different ways. So, a little bit about, you know, what are some of the ways that we're using it? Are we supporting the use of it for the staff in the ways that need to? What does the staff need? Either more from the program, differently from the training we do? Is, you know, how is it rolling out? And is there something that we need to do differently in terms of supporting teachers in how they use it? And I know it's used at different degrees, at different grades, at different teachers, and everything else. So, those were kind of what I was looking for next month.
When you talk about, so, I don't know, maybe it's, I remember a few years ago, not all the specials were trained in responsive classroom, you know, some of the specials.
So, like, how... More than just the classrooms?
Right. And the specials are the, you know, are all our specials teachers trained in responsive classroom? When we get new faculty on board, do they go through our sort of training on responsive classroom? That would be helpful to know.
Sure.
And then, this might not be, but I feel like you, at some point, we had a presentation, I should have looked at the presentation first, but we had it last year, about behavior issues and setting a more formal structure of how we handle behavior issues. Was there, did we have a presentation?
Within responsive classroom, like, when a child is moved out of an environment to deal with a problem, was that what you're talking about? Like, when a behavior issue is dealt within the classroom versus moved to, like, a classroom across the hall? Like, we had team...
I thought there was a presentation that we made, that someone, I thought you made last year, that had something about a new plan...
The plan we needed to approve.
That we had to approve for.
Well, the school climate.
Same school.
Yeah. So, maybe if you can, if you can look up anything that you think will help, or Lisa, if you're remembering something, and then, we can get back to you with more specifics. But in general, kind of behavioral things within the classroom, you know, maybe a little bit about our protocols. Is there something else that you're...
And then, my only other thing is bus, which is something that came out in the surveys and just continues, at least I've heard, that, you know, our behavior on buses is not always great, and what our plan is, because I know it came out in the parent survey last year about sort of us feeling of safety on the buses, and what we're doing on that.
It's about three hours.
Yeah, I know. So, and again, again, this isn't, you know, I mean, and I know you could speak to all of this, you know, really just telling us. So, we're not looking for a lot of formality. It's really, you know, everybody here has a different understanding of what's going on currently and a different level of experience with, you know, previous presentations. I thought it was very helpful to have, when we got this packet, you know, when we were getting the tri-state, to have the 2010 tri-state, so we knew this is the format, this is the kinds of things that go on. I thought that was very helpful. So, if there's stuff that we should do, you know, homework on, that you've already, we've already seen these presentations, and we should be looking back at some of the information, just direct us there. Don't, you know, don't redo something that we can...
And some of what we did, for instance, in tiers of intervention, addressed, how do we, how do we address tier one behaviors, tier two, tier three? We can go back. That's, that's good.
Right. And again, you know, I know on the website, there's some good summaries about many components of this. So, again, if in preparation on our part, we should be looking at some of that, so you're not just repeating stuff that's available somewhere else. Just tell us.
And some of the new things. We had more support from board-certified behavior analysts this year, things like that that I can tell you about.
Okay. Was there anything else that anybody was maybe?
I might have just missed it, because you mentioned that it's always interesting to know the numbers of students who are being served by these different programs.
Sure.
Just give some sense of the average.
Okay. And summer programs, did anybody have any? Okay. What I was kind of thinking of was all of our summer programs, SEP extended day, and even though we're not in charge of rec, you know, some rec either, if, you know, if we could get somebody from rec to give us some information. And I was thinking about it in terms of, how did we do last summer? It was a very different environment. So, how did we do in terms of enrollment, in terms of cost? Because there was a lot of extra costs to the program last year, not only moving, but, you know, renting the space that we used and things like that. So, kind of a just, you know, how did that come out? And then, if you have some general reactions, I know the students, you know, they were fine, you know, parents started out tentative, and I think we had reports that, you know, things got better. But, you know, some reaction, staff, parents, students, you know, I know it was a lot of work for the staff, so, you know, reactions to the whole moving the program. And then, if there's any initial thoughts about this coming summer, not that, you know, we're tying, you know, anybody at this point to it, but, you know, we've got another summer of, nobody can be a Beecher, so. Okay. What else?
That's very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We have to adopt the Board of Ed regular meeting dates. We have the date document in our packet. We need a motion, I think.
I'm moving to adopt the regular dates as presented.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion about the dates? All those in favor? Emily, are you upstate?
I was just putting the dates in.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, is that a, okay, all right. Thank you. And then, oh, the Cable Advisory Council. And I confess, I'm not completely sure what we do on the Cable Advisory Council. Anyway, Sheila McCraven used to be our Board of Ed representative on the Cable Advisory Council, and she stayed there even after she left the Board of Education, this Board of Education. So, she is no longer able to serve on that group, and the town needs two members from, I don't know what, two members from the town and then one from the Board of Ed. So, we need somebody to do this.
Someone who's interested in communication. We've got six awards to...
What?
How often does it meet? I think it's once a month.
I'm honestly not sure about that. The last time we appointed was probably about six years ago.
Did we find out kind of something about when meetings, before we...
It wasn't...
All right. So, what we'll do, Marsha, if you could send out an email, and so, we'll do this, I think this can wait until next month. We don't have, like, there's a burden to do this.
We can accept the resignation.
Okay. All right.
Accept the resignation?
Yes, let's do that. All those in favor of accepting the resignation?
We're moving.
Do we move? Do we not?
No, 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 we didn't get it.
Oh, okay. All right. Can you make, somebody make a motion?
Move it.
But is that as amended, just to...
Right, right, right. Just the, not the replacement, right? We can do that. Okay.